Colleen, do you want me to take notes or are you going to take notes?
I'm here, I can take notes.
Just a minute.
Yeah, no, I'm here.
Okay, that'd be great.
And you also have to announce who's on the board.
Okay.
Who's present.
So, Mary, do we do present before we read the preamble singer?
Yes, I think so, yep. So, starting the meeting, Budget Subcommittee Meeting on Monday, April 27th at 3:00 PM. I guess we'll do a roll call. Mary Branley here.
Lydia Clancy here.
Are we the only two? Roll call.
Um, am I an official member or do I just listen?
If you're a participant, you have to say yourself.
Irene Hall, Interim School Business Manager, here.
Charles, you probably should too then, right?
Okay, Charles Gudron.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to start by reading the verbiage.
And should we let them know that Mary Jane's going to be in and out?
Yes, yep. So, pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 38, Section 20, the school committee is modified. Meeting procedures to ensure the safety of all participants, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Video and audio will be turned off for the public. This meeting will be held via a virtual meeting, Internet, using Zoom technology. Right? All right. Oh, so Irene, what can you tell us?
What do you want to know?
Did you, did you have an opportunity to check on that preschool question that I had about whether that's going to impact our Chapter 70 funding for next year?
Um, no, for reminding me, I'm sitting here with like five other answers and not that one. Try one, I apologize.
Yeah, that's all right, just because I asked it a couple of times, I just want to make sure.
I just know, I'm not sure why, but somehow that one fell through the cracks.
No worries at all, all right. Okay.
So preschool enrollment. I need somebody to get you an answer before our meeting's done today.
Thank you.
Hey, what else?
Okay. Um, I'm trying to find my, my, what you call it, agenda. No, we had asked.
No. About the wage freeze or the contract freeze.
Right, non, non-union, right. We know how much that would save us.
Okay, so which employees are you talking about?
All non-union.
All non-union. I can give you a basic idea in terms of admin. I don't know if that covers everybody or not. I'm just trying to think because I ran through teachers, which includes psychologists, librarians, and counselors. But that's with the union, I ran through the paras, I ran through the janitors.
If we can have all of those, that would be really helpful, I think.
So I do also want to let you know that Mary Jane did reach out to our attorneys regarding that. And she is recommending, our attorney is recommending pretty strongly that we not approach the Teachers Association with a request for a freeze.
Oh, I agree, and I don't think that was the request.
No, I asked, I asked.
But if you want to know the numbers, I can give them to you.
Right, because it has been done before, Lydia. That's why I had asked just on the.
Oh, okay, all right.
Information, and we did do it one other time, so that's why, but at least if we've got the information, it would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, so like I said, give me a minute, I'm going to call that up.
I do think while Irene's looking for that, you know, I had mentioned to this group before, right now, we're getting funding from the federal government in terms of stimulus and other things that they're using to prop up local economies and so on. If you recall back when the crash happened in 2008, once that stimulus money, Race to the Top money went away, that was when, at least in my experience, districts experienced significant cuts in their budget. So I would anticipate that while we may be able to stay whole for next year, for fiscal year '21, we may be in a much different situation than FY '22 and beyond, so I think, you know.
I absolutely agree, which is why I think we shouldn't just sit tight on this year's budget. I think we need to go back and we need to seriously call where we can to not as drastic a step for FY '20, '22.
Let me give you the numbers just so that you have them.
Thank you.
Well, if you were to allow the teachers to move step and lane, and for virtually all teachers, it's only moving a step, only one person was changing lanes, okay? But you were keeping the FY '20 salary versus the FY '21, you would save $221,031.
Thank you, yeah, because that was it, Mike, that was exactly, I think, the way that I worded it. Just freeze the cost of living, but allow them to still do the steps. Virtually everyone does a step, I mean, virtually everybody would see some increase then, is what you're saying.
Yeah. Oh, that's right, okay, no, thanks, it was, it's the other way around, Jennifer. I was just going to say, if you were to do the cost of living, but freeze the steps and lanes, in other words, you're going to move to your FY '21 salary, but you don't get to move a step or a lane, the savings from doing that is $179,377. That one is uniform in that everybody would get some increase. If you, if you freeze the cost of living, but you give steps and lanes, almost half, 40% of our staff is at the maximum lane, I'm sorry, the maximum step. So if you freeze steps and lanes, you're, you're not really freezing the salary any more so for 40% of your staff, but you're freezing it for the 60% that would otherwise have moved.
Helpful, okay, so, so with the allowing the 2%, I think it's the 2%, right? Increase, but not, not doing the steps.
Yep.
Would save $479,000 and it would.
100, 179,333, or 179.
And what was the other one, 220?
222,031.
And that would be freezing the cost of living, but allowing the steps, but then only.
But it's not, it's not equitable.
Right, yes, and I want it to be equitable, so.
More equitable one is, is to freeze the steps and lanes, but allow the.
Okay.
Well, that's for the teachers.
And again, we're not making any, it's just the more information we've got, the better we can make a decision on what we want to do or pursue.
Now, for the, for the paraprofessionals, it's a much smaller number. But I can give it to you, so. Hold on, oops, why is that not coming up? I do have that somewhere.
It's okay.
Here with me. This looks like I'm missing a page.
And Lydia, just for your information, we, something similar, we had the union full support, and I want to say it was like in the 2008, 2009 timeframe, that they were very supportive of doing that, realizing that everybody, you know, the admins were taking, everybody was doing it together. It has been, and that's the only reason I brought it up, because it, you know, we did do it once, and I think Mike Waldron was the MEA lead at that point too, so. And everybody was very, very supportive of it, so.
Okay, so just, just quickly on, on the paraprofessionals, the total increase from last year to this year was going to be $106,000. And that actually included having 71 paras rather than 68, at least in the salaries that I was looking at. So that means that roughly half of that, you know, or a little bit more than half was salaries, you know, full salaries for people. I would have to take that $50,000 increase divided by the 68, you know, paras that are currently on staff, and that's how much you'd save for each one. So the total is obviously very small. And you're looking at, you know, between 300 and, I think the highest increase for somebody was like $600 or $700. I mean, it's just not a lot of money.
And I think in terms of the salary that these people are making to begin with, again, it just, in terms of my recommendation, I would, I would strongly recommend that we not consider going down that route.
I agree, and I was, and that's why I didn't bother doing it out by steps and lanes and cola, because it really comes out to such a small amount.
We work so hard.
The total increase? What's the total increase again? 106,000?
Hold on, and a little bit of change. 106 and 41. 106,041.
Thank you.
And then I haven't been able to calculate the custodians yet because they need a contract extension or a new contract, whichever they decide to do. So without information on what we might have been planning to pay for fiscal year '21, I can't give you anything. I can only tell you what the total budget was for this year for 12 custodians at, at regular pay, not including overtime.
Isn't there a contract opt June 30th?
Yes.
Ended it, yeah, and I think we ended it with a 2% increase last year to this year.
But weren't we going to start negotiations already or no?
We are in negoti, well, excuse me, we are, the budget, or no, that's this group, the Negotiation Subcommittee has been meeting with the town attorney and our attorney to generate the memorandum of understanding between the town and the schools in regards to the Facilities Department. We just got something back today from Sarah, our attorney, in that capacity. So once we have that document finalized, then we will begin to enter into negotiations with the custodians. I do know that we were waiting on, as of the last meeting, negotiation meeting we had, we were waiting on the request to bargain from the Custodial Association. Sarah was going to reach out to their representative to see, because we hadn't heard yet, and that's the, that's what starts the process with negotiations. So we are due, and we have things in the works and are in process, but we are not done, we're obviously not.
All right, great, thank you. And if we were, and again, just, I don't even know who's in the audience, but just throwing things out, because I know initially we were talking about potentially having fewer custodians, and right now, we, we are at one less. And I know this wouldn't be popular, but if we did, you know, remove another position, what would that save us?
Hold on. On that page.
And I do know, I don't know if it was in this meeting or another meeting, Mary Jane did speak with Justin DiMarco, who expressed concern. I was not in that meeting, so I don't know what specifically the concern.
He was, he was not pleased at the thought of losing more than one.
Yeah, the savings, if you were to cut the second custodian, assuming you've cut your least expensive, the least seniority, which was going to be 46,700 and, I'm sorry, 47,694, the next person out would be 48,505.
I honestly don't think we can afford to cut anymore, given the fact that this is going to extend, the pandemic's going to extend into the fall, and we're going to need to continue to clean much more thoroughly than we have in the past. And we're also looking at a potential second peak in late winter, according to projections. So I really feel strongly that one is the most that we can lose.
I tend to agree, but again, you want the information, you know, fingertip, just in case, but that's, that's what it would be. The other thing to keep in mind for wanting, you know, not to cut more than one is each one of the, you know, remaining custodians gets a certain number of, you know, sick days and personal days. And you don't get sub-custodians, so now you're asking people to cover for them, and you're not going to have enough people to do that if your staff is too low, or you've got to start paying a lot more overtime, and by the time you pay all the extra overtime, you might as well have had another, another person on staff. So we'll keep that part of it in mind as well, in terms of gee, how many positions can we actually afford to cut?
And Irene, did you share with them that if the administrator's salary freezes?
I know, I was, no, we got sidetracked. I do know that on a, just as a quick, without my finding my actual information, it was going to be roughly, I want to say $16,000 if we were to, to freeze the salaries versus planned, planned increases. And again, that's a rough, rough guesstimate.
Total, total of 16,000.
Yeah.
For all six.
Yeah, because you've got new, you've got new people coming on board, so it's not really a raise.
So that's just the principals?
I know, that would have been principals and central office admin.
So it's not just six?
No, it would have been more like eight or nine people.
Okay, because I thought Mary just said six.
Um, not that would add to 16,000.
Right, okay.
Though some of that, it gets dicey because you can't really look at the superintendent's salary because that's not a pay increase, that's a totally new person.
Correct.
And to, and the same is true for my position, and in fact, in my position, depending on who's hired, could be saving money compared to what you would have been spending, you know, had Michelle not left.
And the same with Carol Gayen's position also, correct?
Same thing, in fact, what I had, I just sent the information this morning to Mary Jane and Brian and Jennifer to you. The average or median, and they're both within $1,000 of each other, for that position is 113,000, which is 10,000 less than Carol was making. With, not surprising, given her years of experience, you know, that's what she's being paid for. So again, in that position, you could actually have a savings, depending on who you choose to hire.
I think in terms of both of those positions, I would be careful on budgeting any savings from those, just having been in, in multiple hiring committees in the past or screening committees. A budgetary component is not something that folks are really willing to consider, even when it comes down to sort of a teacher placement, never mind a position such as the Director of Student Services. So just in terms of, of looking forward, I think, you know, if, if it happens and it's a savings, I think that's great. But I wouldn't necessarily count on it.
Right, but again, it means that I can't include those numbers, either plus or a negative, in terms of how much you would quote save, because those are not planned increases.
Correct.
They're not planned, they're also not planned decreases.
Can you give me the 16,000 number again? 16,000 what?
Um, hold on, if you want the whole number, I have to look for it. Give me a second.
Never mind, that's okay.
I do have it somewhere.
Okay, I just want to say that I'm working on, when it's posted and we get going, on the Director of Special Student Services, and I'm hoping to work in conjunction with CPAC on this. This is a crucial, crucial position, something very important. I, I'd hate to think that we had our hands tied to, to a salary that would be lower than what the average salary is.
I agree with you.
I just think that's, for this district right now, I feel that's an extremely important position.
Oh, absolutely, but again, keep in mind that the average salary that I gave you of 113,000, that is 10,000 less than Carol was making.
Right, except if we, if we looked at what the average salary was of very experienced sped directors, it might be different. So I don't want to, I don't want to tie our hands together.
Yeah, that's an average of all of them.
Right.
One-year experience to 25, that's absolutely true.
Charles, how are you, how are you at marketing that position then? Because when we did the superintendents, we gave like a range. Are you doing a similar type of thing when you're putting it out there?
We're, I think what we usually just say is that we say salary con, with experience or something, you know, we leave it blank. Yeah, we don't really say much. Sometimes people will call, but we, it's, you really don't want to start off the, off the gate with a, with a lower salary. That's all, I've had a lot of experience in this, and I think it's, but we'll see what happens.
So I, I think it's important for context too, because as of right now, you know, Mary Jane has been speaking with the town, with Greg Johnson, with Mike Ozo, and we have a call set up with them, I believe, later on this week to, to sort of pick at these details a little bit more. As of right now, they're recommending that we move forward with the budget that we presented. And, you know, Irene is certainly participating in all of the business meetings across the state to sort of get a sense of what the state might come back at, because we do have some funds that do not come from the town that we have to keep an eye on, including Circuit Breaker, Percentage Reimbursement, the Student Opportunity Act, which I think we're, you know, we're sort of not planning on seeing, and our Chapter 70 funding. The good thing for Maynard, ironically, may be that we lost our foundation aid due to our demographic situation this year. So we have already made that, some, made that reduction. So it, it is quite likely that the state aid for Chapter 70 could come in about the same as we had this year, and I know there was not a budgetary increase in that. Circuit Breaker is something that is, is less known in terms of looking at that budget, and Irene has her ear to the ground to make sure that we can plan for that. But I think in terms of looking at where we are spending additional money, or money we don't have, and money we would be getting in through savings, we had a bit of a conversation this morning. We're anticipating, or Irene is anticipating, that we're getting about 119,000 through the CARES Act. And that's not a confirmed number, but that is, is an estimate based on what she has been hearing. We know that we will be losing a facility rental fee of about $38,000 over the summer with College Gate not operating. The CARES Act is, excuse me?
College Gate, how much, 38,000?
38,000, yep.
Oh, I thought it was between 50 and 60.
That's what I thought as well, Irene ran the numbers in the contract and it's 38, so yay, we found 12 grand. So.
Yeah.
So looking at the CARES Act, that is exactly, that reduction that we will see in our facility rental account is exactly what that CARES Act funding is for. It's to make sure that if we're seeing a loss of revenue or an increase in costs, we're able to provide that. Additionally, Irene is working hard with the business managers to get reductions in sped, special ed transportation and yellow bus transportation, so we will be seeing some savings there to the tune of maybe, you know, 10 to 15,000 a piece, maybe. They're working hard on that component. We are going to be saving some money on substitutes, daily substitutes, and we are going to be spending less on, less out of our school choice on our building, day-to-day substitutes, excuse me. So that we'll be seeing some savings on our day-to-day subs, our building subs, and we'll be spending less out of school choice on our day-to-day subs in that capacity. So all of these dollars add up not to, you know, a solution, but I think give us a little bit of a cushion so that we may be able to move forward, at least at this point, with the budget that we had presented and put forward. If the Circuit Breaker numbers come back at a scary percentage increase or reimbursement, then yes, we're going to have to retool and reconfigure. At the same time, if we do plan, and Brian had mentioned this, Mr. Haas had mentioned this in, in a previous meeting, if we do plan sort of for the worst-case scenario, we could create a panic like we have seen in the past when we've had significant reductions that may not come to fruition. And so I would caution that we, you know, we do our due diligence and get the information and figure out what contingencies might be. But if, if we're fairly confident that what we're seeing, we can move forward with, I don't know that I would be throwing a lot of cuts up against the wall that we may not need to make. Charles?
I would just very much like to agree with Jennifer. I think she started this meeting talking about how difficult the FY '22 budget is going to be. And that's where we're going to really have to tighten things. If we go in with a '21 budget that's even lower, it's going to be that much harder because the increase is going to be that much harder. So I, I would think that we, if the town has told us to move forward with the budget that we had, and we're looking at the fact that the next year, which is a negotiating year as well, we really have to tighten the belt, that will put us in a better position, I think.
Okay, so I have a question then, because this budget that we worked on was based on a 4.4 or 4.1 increase, regardless, depending on where that MOU falls in, that position. But if it's actually 3.6, I guess that's where my confusion. Does that mean that we're dealing with less money than we originally thought?
No.
No.
So this is, this is the playing with the money, two, there's two pockets of money, and I say playing with, you know, nicely, I don't want to throw the town in any capacity under the bus. They have been incredibly collaborative with us throughout this process. But in terms of whether it's a 4.4 or a 4.1 or a 3.6 or whatever it was, there are two pockets of money that come into play. The first one is the reduction that we needed to make over the summer due to an increase in out-of-district school choice and some other costs. So because of, because of that reduction, the town started off our budget, and I can't, off the top of my head, remember what that reduction was, started off our budget for.
From last summer?
Yeah, it was like 150.
Correct.
Oh, the 150 from last summer.
Correct.
Got it, so they, they didn't base it on what they originally allocated for F, okay, 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 okay.
Now, when we built our budget, we did, because, you know, from Michelle's standpoint, and Irene agreed, when she took over the budget, we, you know, it wasn't as though we didn't need that 150,000, it just wasn't fair, so we had to reduce. So a level service budget would have included that in the base, and so that was where we got the 4.4%, and they got the 4.1%. You also have the additional dollars of the school committee, or, I'm sorry, the facilities director position that we included in our 4.4% increase. Without that, we would have been at the 4.1 number. And then when you add in the $150,000 reduction that they asked us to make in January of this year, which was the cutting of the custodial position and the elementary principal position, so those were the two reductions to make up that $150,000 piece. That's where we get to the 3.6 number.
Okay. Mary, let me ask you your question on preschool?
Yes.
Okay. So the preschool enrollment, any child in preschool receiving IEP, okay, services, is absolutely counted. You are then allowed to count as many additional preschool students until they equal that number. So let's say you've got 100 kids in preschool and 25 are getting IEP. You can count 25 more for a maximum of 50. Okay, so the number of preschool students that you can count for enrollment is dependent on the number of preschool students receiving IEP services.
Much.
Okay, so what they're trying to do is prevent you from, you know, basically running a daycare as a preschool and, you know, bumping your, your numbers up artificially.
All right.
So, so chances are even a decrease in pre-K enrollment, unless our pre-K enrollment is running more than 50% with IEPs, a small decrease in enrollment should not hurt us. I, I think that's where you were going with that.
Exactly, yep, just want to make sure that we weren't, yeah, hurting ourselves.
Okay, so I have another question, because I've had a couple of parents of preschool kids reach out. We voted that anyone on free or reduced would get free tuition or half tuition? Free, correct? Okay. And if anyone, because of their new situation, could not pay, that we would also waive the fee for them, is that correct? We were going to go on a case-by-case basis?
I believe what we said is that we asked them to fill out, Colleen's unmuted herself.
Yes, they were asked to fill out a online free and reduced lunch application. All it asks is to enter numbers, they don't have to verify anything. All it asks is to enter numbers. They don't have to verify anything. Then it comes back as free and it helps some other levels too.
Okay, great. So I, I will tell them that, because I guess there's been some miscommunication and people thought that they were told to just unenroll their kids and.
A letter that went out to families is in your school committee meeting drive for Wednesday night, if you want to see what was actually went out.
Okay, great, thanks.
And when did that go out, Colleen?
It was last week, I think it was.
Right after.
Found out school was closed or the day after school was closed. I can't remember exactly.
So what we're saying, Jen, is stay with what we've got. And then we just look carefully for next year, correct?
I really think so. You know, again, Irene is doing her due diligence to make sure that we have any numbers or any guesses at numbers. My fear would be, because where we're going to find significant savings if we had to cut, you know, an additional 150, 500,000 or million, we're reconfiguring our programming, like significantly. During the budget subcommittee, or I'm sorry, the tri-board meetings, they had asked us to be looking at, if you recall before all of this happened, what would it look like if we needed to do a million-something reduction? And I had run the numbers, short, pure numbers, not looking at impact in terms of reduction of positions. And could we cut 11 teaching positions and not have class size above 30? We could. I don't recommend that we do that. I, and I certainly don't recommend that we do that when we don't have a specific deficit in front of us that is saying you need to. Because there may be a time where we do need to look at more of a nuclear option in regard to significant reductions in programming, because we simply don't have the funds to do it, to run those programs. We may be in that situation in a couple of years. I would not want to, to eliminate those programs now, allow families, you know, to be more concerned and to, to increase our out-of-district numbers, either through special education or through school choice, thereby limiting our revenue or, or, you know, our dollars as well, if we're not in a position where we know that we need to do that.
It feel, it definitely feels like the kids, everybody, teachers and the students are going to need more support next year versus us starting to make cuts that, to your point, we may not have to do this early.
And we don't know what next school year is going to look like in terms of the structure of the school day. We are going to need to provide supports for families in different ways, I think, than we ever have before. I, I think, you know, could, could we take, could I take our team and reconfigure? We could. I don't know that that's where you want to spending our time right now, when we don't know that we're going to have to do that.
Except because we don't know what it's going to look like next year and we may need to consider options and resources that we've never had to before, doesn't it make sense for us to set ourselves up for having the money in order to do those things?
So it's a great point. I think what we're looking at, and again, I don't have, I have no data, so everyone who's listening, wherever this goes, I have no guidance that this is what's going to be. But other places have mentioned, and Commissioner Riley did mention in his call last week, you know, could it be that we're doing temperature checks? Although apparently that doesn't matter. That's not a data point anymore that shows whether you have COVID-19 or not. You know, we're doing temperature checks and it's an every other day or every other week schedule. That could be our reality. I don't think, Lydia, given that, that, that reality is going to mean that we need to increase staffing or things of that nature. It may mean, though, that we, we change the way we structure a grade-level team so that there are some folks who are able to provide remote access during the week that the half of the kids are home and there are other people who are providing that face-to-face instruction. You know, so I don't think that the changes that we're going to see, or the ones at least that are being discussed, are going to necessitate increasing, you know, our teaching FTE in that capacity. And frankly, we don't necessarily have the space to do that anyway, right? So even if you imagine that we did an early shift and a late shift every day.
That's not what I was thinking. I was thinking more if we had to continue doing virtual classes and like not occupy the building at all, if we needed more equipment or.
Oh, um, so that's a great point. So we have purchased-
Professional development for the teachers.
Yep. If that were the case, you know, complete shutdown, we're shut down for the first half of the year, wherever we're at. We have, basically, I think what we would be doing is taking our current professional development budget and reallocating it from the PD that we had planned into some of these other pieces. It may be that we would be taking some of our subscription purchases that we use for tactile materials and reinvesting them into some other pieces. So I think we may be changing what we do with the budget, but I don't know that it would need an increase. The one place that it might, and I can ask Adam about this, we did purchase an additional 100 extra Chromebooks because we distributed, you know, our capacity, what we had, out to the community, over 100 Chromebooks. We did purchase 100 extra that we should be getting in shortly, which was our normal purchase for the one-to-one program for the fifth and the eighth graders. That might be a place where we need to see an increase. But I think that we could likely, I, I don't think that it's, I don't want to speak because I don't, I, I can't do that math that quickly in my head. But I think that's something that we can figure out.
And let me add that, Lydia, if we're going completely virtual for the fall, I'm, I would believe that means we're also not doing fall sports. And so there would be there.
And what about the Xerox machine contract?
I'm in the middle of that right now. I can't give you, yet. I'm literally in, when this, when we started the call, on my desk are all the contracts.
Okay.
I'm in the middle of looking at that.
So the activity-
Isn't that much money. I mean, it's some, but it's, it's not as much as, as, you know, yeah.
No, but I mean, any little saving somewhere.
But please don't tell me you're expecting 50,000 on that, because I'm not going to get to 50,000 in copier.
No, no. So the activity fee, you said that that would be a deficit, but would it really? Because we wouldn't be putting out money either.
It would be a deficit. Well, it would be a little of both. So if we don't do fall sports, we're going to be saving a lot of money on coaches, transportation, equipment, et cetera. But there's also that loss of revenue. But the student activity fee does not 100% cover sports by any stretch.
But if you aren't having the sports, then it's okay that it doesn't cover 100%, because it would, it would be a wash.
Some savings there.
And how about the bus? Could we, would we be negotiating the bus, maybe?
I know, that's, that's a good question. If we, if we're still virtual in the fall, I don't know what's going to happen to the bus companies. I, I really, that's going to be an interesting one. It's like, okay, I'm willing to pay some money now, because we used you for most of the year. You have done your best to stay solvent. You know, if I called you next week, if the governor said, hey, change my mind, open school, and I called the bus companies, they're ready to go. Okay, they're, they're ready to roll. If this goes virtual into the fall, I, I really don't know what's going to happen, especially with a smaller company like ours, like a big one, like First Student, you know, that's national. You know, they might be okay. Maybe they gobble up the little guys and then God knows what's going to happen to our rates. I just, that is a total, I don't have a crystal ball.
And I do just want to put out there for folks that are listening or for all of you, we have no indication that that's the direction we're going in. You know, so I think in some weird ways, it might be easier if we were to continue with just remote learning, because we would have all this time to make it better. I am fully expecting that we will be back in some capacity in the fall. But I do think it will look different from what we, what we normally expect. And again, that's where we may be shifting professional development funds or other funds. But that's, those are things that are currently budgeted. It would just shift from one need to another.
They say anything Friday? I heard that the, Jessie, Commissioner Riley had another meeting with you guys on Friday or something. Further toning up the remote learning. Did they say anything more about the fall? Or it's still too early to even give any thoughts on that?
Yes. So I didn't, I don't think I participated in Friday's call. We did get the guidance document from Dussie around remote learning that said that they would include some of that. Charles, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look. I didn't see anything in there.
No, nothing, nothing about the fall, just the, the, the standards, which is.
Right.
It was a long document, but there was not necessarily an awful lot of, very, very long documents, but not necessarily anything particularly. Would you agree, Jennifer, just this time?
I do. I, I think the one thing I recall seeing about opening in the fall is that they're going to work with public health officials to give us the best guidance. But I don't think they gave any guidance as to what, any thought as to what that guidance is. Because I, frankly, I think people don't know. You know.
Until they take the first step. I mean, we can't plan anything or plan our own guide, because we need to hear from them first.
Right. And I think this, this virus is changing so rapidly. As I said, you know, last week, the, you know, the plan was that we would do, not the plan. You know, what people were saying we would do is do temperature checks when people come into the building and, and if you have a temperature, you go home. That's not a, an indicator anymore. So I think that's where, from a public health perspective, I don't think they know enough of how we could open in that sort of capacity, which is, I believe, why the governor closed for the year to buy the time, to figure that out. And so, you know, one of the things that will be interesting to see is what Governor Baker does in regards to the May 4 deadline for non-essential businesses and what rules we begin to see loosen, or when we see them loosen around social distancing practices, whenever that occurs. And then once that does occur, what happens with the virus and, and spread and things of that nature? I think that's going to be telling for us in terms of how we will reopen in the fall. We did get, and this is not a budgetary issue, but a curricular issue, as Charles said, guidance on what the prerequisite standards are to go from one grade level to the next. I, I have a communication that's being prepared that will go out to our community. I think you can be proud of your staff and for your staff that we did the right thing by focusing on critical concepts and skills, because we are now in a place where we're modifying and adjusting, rather than reinventing, which, which some other districts have found themselves in a position where they are doing. And we will have a parent survey going out in regards to remote learning with that document as well, so that we can get some feedback and continue to adjust for the next several weeks.
Anything else, Lydia?
No, I, I mean, I've had my questions answered. I think maybe you and I need to talk and process before the school committee meeting.
Yep, yep.
And then, and then see where we go from there.
There was, Jennifer, oh, how's, do I dare ask, how's your dog?
He's still alive. Yeah, that's good. It was, it was, yeah, we were told that he had days and, and as he is done with everything else, he is taking more days than he should be allowed. So we're enjoying the minutes, but thank you.
That's good. So we missed you last week, because it was the question about one of the, about, you know, one of the places that we were making the cuts with the paraprofessionals and that. And though we had gone back and asked if we could get some information from the co-teaching classes, to say the pros and the cons. You know, having the pairs versus having the special ed teacher as well as the, the regular teacher in each one of the classrooms. So that's going to definitely come up again, obviously, and understandably this week, so.
So we are pulling that data. We're pulling the student growth data for math and ELA and, and then some other components in regards to the students' IEPs and moving forward towards progress on those goals. And we can share that with you. And we're looking at it as a whole program, not necessarily just in one grade level. I can tell you that the, you know, so I have looked at the data in individual grade level pieces and we are seeing gains for the co-taught classes that some, to some degree, out, outpace the non-co-taught classes. So I can get that information for you and, and.
What about parent feedback? Do you have any parent feedback?
The teachers collect feedback from their students and from their families. I can ask them what they have done in that capacity.
That would be great, because one of the parents-
I've, I've heard probably 50/50 on that.
In terms of what?
In terms of positivity. And like, a lot of the gen ed parents were really apprehensive about the model ahead of time and then have found that it's actually been great having two parents, I mean, two professionals, two teachers in there. And then it's been really mixed in, on the, on the fed side. Some fed parents have, you know, transitioned, their children have had no problems whatsoever, and then others have had huge trouble. So I think that's the only caveat is maybe, well, we're doing it random selection though, right?
No.
Oh, no?
Not for the special education students.
Okay, all right. So maybe, maybe we just need to consider the needs of our students a little more thoroughly, maybe? I don't know.
Yep. So we, I can reach out to Carol and her team. I know what they do initially is that they look at all of the special education students and the grades in which we have co-teaching, which next year will be all the way from first through fifth grade. They identify which of those students would benefit from the increased instruction. Right now, we are focused on math and literacy development, so students who have those particular goals in their IEPs. And then they look at personalities as well and other components to make sure that we have a balanced mix within the special education population, so that it'll work. But then the classroom teachers take that list and then also look at the rest of the students within that grade and identify who would be most benefited by being in that classroom, making sure that we have appropriate peers with them as well, so that they can, so they can see some modeling in that capacity. So yes, I would say if there's a parent in particular who feels that the program is not working for their, their child, absolutely, reach out. I do know that we have people who are in the co-taught classroom one year and not in it the next year in every grade. So that is, you know, it's not as, it's not. What's up?
By request.
Um, I think my knowledge is by our, our team, but I wouldn't be involved in those conversations. I can ask Carol specifically about that.
Because I would hope that if, if someone wanted to remain in co-taught, that they would be able to, that that opportunity is there for them.
As long as it's working for the student, that is what we look at. There are situations where the data is showing, you know what, this is just not having the impact that we thought it would. We think we can better support the student in a pull-out type situation with some, with some instruction, with a special education teacher in a small, smaller group setting, and so they make decisions in that capacity. I am not aware of anyone who wanted to be in the co-taught classroom and was, was told no. In fact, the opposite. I've been aware of a couple of experiences where the opposite was true, where folks asked specifically and we made adjustments on the fly.
Okay, great.
So like I said, we will be getting that presentation prepared, looking at the grade level data and having the teachers work with that, because obviously they work with the students as well, so, because their voice, I think, is the more important one in regards to this program. And I do just want to emphasize too, that, you know, I know there was concern about, you know, could we cut other things in order to save the paraprofessional positions? The only reductions that we are making due to budgetary need are the elementary principal and the one custodial position. So if it is a decision that we want to cut other things in order to, to not have those reductions in the paraprofessional component, I think it's important that you know that, that that's a programmatic decision. And so I think bears broader, longer conversations about what we believe works for students.
Okay, all right. I am tempted to revisit the engineering position at the high school only because we are not going to be having the Chinese students join us.
So, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just wondering, is there, is there really a strong draw? Because after we had those conversations, I had several parents reach out to me at saying, you know, if my kid wants engineer, they're going to go to ANSA or ASABET. They're not going to stay in Maynard for that. And I basically was supporting the fact that we have that fantastic working space and. and that it would be good for kids who want a more well-rounded education, not necessarily just focusing on engineering. But again, I don't know what the ask is in, on turn, in terms of what the students are looking.
Um, so Chuck and Kevin are working on the schedule currently. As of the last poll, I pulled the data, I think about two or three weeks ago. There is one engineering course that has appropriate numbers of requests to be run, which we only offer two within the schedule. It is possible, however unlikely, that the second course would also have sufficient numbers once everything shakes out, although it, it could happen. So what we're really looking at there is it's a point two or a point four maximum FTE. What is important to understand is that that was a reallocation of funds where we looked at a department at the high school that we believed we could, with, with the work of Chuck and this class sizes that we're seeing, we could reduce in order to fill that engineering position.
Teacher that's being shared between two, okay, all right, got it.
So what we, what we are, what we are doing, and this is, is to your point, we have one teacher who is within the math department who it is essentially has agreed to take the trainings to provide those courses. Again, we're using Project Lead the Way, so it is all sort of pre-scripted and packaged and they go through extensive training. This is a nationally known program where students at the end of it can get college credits from places like WPI, RPI, those types of things. In regards to why putting this program in place, you know, where this came from in, in looking at it was the student data in terms of the surveys, which we will do again. But also we were hearing from families that they wanted to see those options here. Beyond that, I would say, just from, again, a programmatic perspective, I have done a lot of work over the last two or three years with the skills cabinet through the state. I, I sit on our regional board and what we look at are the places where we can decrease the skill gap in critical areas. And the two critical areas across the state are engineering, technology, IT, and healthcare. So another component that I think we need to think about is how are we providing programming for students, one, that they are interested in, but two, gives them a pathway to success in the future. And, and I know that I have certainly received my fair share of criticism in regards to my stance in this capacity. I just think that it is, we need to provide opportunities for students to see what kinds of jobs are out there and develop the skills to be able to have them.
Okay, all right.
Let me add anecdotally to that. My younger son went to Blackstone Valley because that's the, the vocational school that serves Grafton. And what I don't think you're as realized sometimes is you're not guaranteed to get your shop of choice.
Right, that's true.
Electronics and was waitlisted along with 50 other students. By the time he got to junior, he's realizing that all of his buddies were getting to take the fun electronics classes he wanted as electives at Grafton. But he wasn't getting any of them at BVT because he ended up in IT by default, which he transferred into after doing welding and deciding that was not for him. Now, he did finish his career at BVT, but he keeps saying, you know, I should have just stayed in Grafton and I could have taken the classes I wanted as electives. So Jennifer's absolutely right. We need these things and I think as word gets out and they hear more stories like my son's, and I don't believe he's unique. Okay, that, yeah, it is going to be beneficial for us because kids are going to say the same thing. Gee, I don't want to go there and have to take culinary, which I have no interest in because it's the only shop that has room for me. And then not get to take the classes I want, whereas I can stay at Maynard and still get to take my electronics. So she, she's right. She's absolutely right.
And also, right, there were two places too, Lydia, that you'll, you'll agree with. When we, when you and I went and met with the teachers up at the high school.
Yeah.
It wasn't clear that they kept saying that the school is not what it was, that the options are not there.
I agree, I agree.
Absolutely.
Secondly, with that, more importantly, or is important, but to me even more importantly, parents that have had older kids go through the high school will tell you that their younger kids are not getting the same opportunities that their older kids did. And that might just be a four-year difference.
Oh, I know.
Pathways to success that we keep hearing about to make our students successful when they leave, whether they go on to college or go right into the workforce. So those would be the three reasons that I would really want to keep this in place.
No, that's fine. That all makes sense. I just, I wanted to ask just partially for my own clarification and also because people keep asking me, you know, well, why don't we get rid of this or why don't we get rid of that?
Yep.
It's helpful for people to understand.
Absolutely, happy to share.
Right, unfortunately.
I, I am all for it. I agree with you, Mary. I mean, when we met with the teachers, it was abundantly clear that they are really feeling left behind up there. And, and I've spoken with a lot of high school students too. So no, I don't, I don't have a problem. I just didn't, if we were hiring a full-time engineering teacher for it, then I would want to reconsider it. But if it's, if it's a teacher that's already there, that's just being reallocated, then that is not an issue.
Yep.
No, okay.
Great. So Jennifer, when are we going to be, are we going to be able to get the information on the co-teaching scenario and the data and that for Wednesday's meeting?
This Wednesday?
Yeah. Okay.
I have a meeting with them Wednesday. They are pulling their data. I can pull their data.
Wanted to be done thoughtfully, not rushed. So if it means the following week, then that's okay.
I would prefer that because again, I can give you my voice looking at the numbers and, and the numbers are what they are. They can give you the voice on the experience in the classroom.
If I could just say something about that, the research is very clear, the research that I've studied anyways, very clear on the, what happens with co-teaching classes. Quite a significant raise in ELA scores, moderate raises in math and quite a decrease in attendance problems. We can look at what we could do better, but I'd hate to abandon the co-teaching model.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that at all. Not at all. I'm just trying to figure out a way.
Right, we can work, we can work on that and make it better and tweaks things, but I think we're heading in the same direction that research is, is telling us.
Yeah, it's just, there are the outliers of fed students who it really doesn't work for. They end up losing a year and that I want to try to avoid as business as possible.
I can bring that feedback back to our teams and figure out what we can do in that capacity. And, and you know, because again, we want it to work for the student. That is the entire purpose of having the program there.
Yeah.
Good. I do have to go. I have another meeting, so. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Bye, Charles.
We're about, do we?
Yeah, I think, I think if I have any other questions, I'll send follow-up email.
And then you and I can talk, Lydia, before our meeting on Wednesday too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Mary, did, was there anything else that I forgot to answer? And I do apologize again for.
I think you covered, you covered both of them because the, I was just wondering about that, the freeze for the, the staff and, and the preschool thing. So no, thank you very much. We're good. Good with that. All right.
Perfect one. Do we want to ask Brian if he wants?
Definitely. Sorry. Yes, definitely.
Hi, everybody. Yes, I've been listening.
Any questions? Any points? Any opinions?
No, actually, we spoke, I spoke with Jennifer and Mary Jane and Irene earlier today, and this conversation was kind of a, it was a precursor to this one. And I would, you know, we had a good conversation about the co-taught model and I would concur with, you know, Jennifer's few of that programmatically and Charles' explanation in terms of the research around the co-taught model. So I would look at that as a step in the right direction for Maynard and continuing that. And I also, we had a good conversation just from salaries, if you will, for the short exchange of administrative salaries to freeze them in terms of what does that do to morale? Because like we're all talking about teachers and administrators working incredibly hard from really all the time, but especially marched through the end of this year. And I think Jennifer's spot on that we really don't know what next year looks like. And in the best case scenario, the opening of school next year will probably be the most challenging any of us have ever seen across the country, just given the pandemic and we don't know what we don't know. So going to a zero percent for them, given that it's only 16,000, I think that would be, that could be just morale-wise, not a worthwhile move. So, and I heard you guys talking about that. And I know Jennifer and Mary Jane and Irene and I talked about that earlier today. Overall, and you know, I agree with what you guys are talking about in terms of looking at all the data. And it'll be interesting to see what the teachers specifically say about the co-taught model when Jennifer pulls that. I would assume it supports everything that we think about that in the research that I've read about that. So I'm glad you're getting your questions answered. Great questions. And I agree, we don't want to put out there worst-case scenario because realistically, there may be cuts in the next year or two.
Right, okay.
And again, having to do with the co-taught, it's not like we're ahead of the curve. We're behind the curve.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Other school systems that have been doing this for a number of years who even have more data and they're very successful school systems that have been doing it. So I look at the fact that we join them as a real, you know, a good thing. So.
I agree with you completely. And I also, in terms of high school and the curriculum related to, not necessarily science, but the STEM and the engineering, looking at that and, you know, keeping that and even expanding that even better for Maynard. I mean, that's an area that's going strong lots of places. And the more we can do that and the more successful that program is, the more our students will want to stay and our families will be receptive to that. And we have some great teachers. I mean, I've spoken to Mark Sinopoli about that and it's near and dear to him. I mean, he loves it. And if we can support him within that program, we'll have kids who want to take that. And the more kids we have who want to take it, they'll talk to their friends and then their friends will have younger siblings who want to be involved. And it's a very positive trickle-down effect, if you will. So agreeing with what I'm hearing and just supporting that and wanting you to know that I'm reaching out and talking to some of those people in terms of budget issues as well. So thanks for including me in the discussion.
Sure. And I'd just like to say that I, I, when I was all head up last week at the school committee meeting about cuts and whatnot, part of it was I didn't understand the 4.1 versus 3.6.
Sure.
And I also, when we discussed getting losing or laying off a fed teacher, I did not understand that we were replacing that fed teacher. So that was another issue. So I've calmed down now.
A lot. It's a lot of moving parts.
Right. And you're talking, you know, everybody's passionate. And that's the way I referred after the meeting that, you know, when you're thrown with this kind of numbers and we haven't seen, I don't think the worst of it, because to everybody's point, I think next year is going to be worse. But you want to keep the, the hurt as far away from the kids as you can. So so that's, yeah. So it's all done with your heart in the right place.
Ready.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right. So do we need to do a motion to close for some committee meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm going to make a motion, we close.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Me and Mary.
All good. All right, bye you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be well, everyone.